I don't know. Saw one of them show up.
A little light on representatives.
Yeah.
Alex Peal was supposed to show up for Sunoco.
Jackie's coming, one way or another. I didn't get anything from the Alco credit union about his presentation.
Did he respond to this?
And that Sunday.
A few.
I'm not.
Says you told the people.
No, no one knew. Like. You guys were sort of looking for that one and where it was at and what happened. So in our letters now, moving forward, we're going to make sure that it's a condition of any relief that they get and that it needs to be put into the overall cost opinion letter that we that we generate and we'll have a specific dollar amount spelled out for the fee for the. For the widening.
Yeah, because that stuff really didn't get talked into the whole lot.
Nick and I talked, I'm like, I don't know how it, I don't know how it ever got captured.
No.
Because it must have like sort of gotten to the end and John was like, oh yeah, you need to pay this. But I don't even know how they agreed to it. Oh, yeah, I don't even know. I never saw an estimate for, right? The only time those stony battery road ones with them not doing the widening and all the other stuff that goes, those, those, we did something with that, but those were completely different. But it's normally just that, like I said, milliner related center line. So that's in the Velco letter. It's all worked into to that, that they need to provide a separate estimate and what it is. And I talked through that with PM.
They're doing Centerville and.
Yes, it's a both township roads. And they're doing the Filo for all of. But I said, do the whole frontage of that because they're getting a deferral of the sidewalk for the backlot. But I said, just do the pavement for the whole thing right now and be done with it instead of collecting a few for this part of. I commanded that was taken and were and were good. So then, like I said, it'll be in, it'll be in the letter and that should be a checkbox when you go down through and you get those, the letter of credit, the fees for the stormwater, and then any other filos or that one all be there and make and look at those and make sure that.
Check them off.
Otherwise, I don't know how he would know to collect that.
I honestly don't know.
He probably has a bunch of them, I would guess.
This wrong again.
Cindy, you ready?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the November 10th meeting of the East Tenfield Township Planning Commission. Please join me in opening the meeting with the pleasure of flying. Such ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we start through tonight's agenda, we have two regular members who are not able to be with us tonight. Mrs. Byrne and Mr. Rohr. So I'm trying to share the opportunities here. I would ask Mr. Rush and Mr. Spangler to be voting members tonight. Of course, Mr. Bolt, you can still participate in any question. All right. Before we get to the action items, we need to review the minutes from our last meeting, which was back in September, September 8. I just got a chance to read her in tonight. And I, according to my notes, Mr. Datter seconded the TLK partner motion, not this.
Okay.
You could double check that and change it.
I was working off of John's notes, so I can understand why that could have been an error. But I will double check and make sure.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments on the minutes as they were presented? If not, then I'm ready for a motion to take action on them.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the September 8th, 2021 planning commission minute meetings with the change that you indicated.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have motion by Mr. Datter, second by Ms. Will, that we approve the minutes of the September 8th meeting, subject to the one change of the second by Mr. Datter instead of Mrs. Byrne for the TLK partners. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? So that'd be unanimous. All right. First action item is a Sunoco redevelopment sketch plan for 520 Centerville Road. Where are they both active?
You'll just need to talk into one of the microphones, either one.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the Zoom. Also here are none, but in case there is one, in case somebody comes on.
Also for the recording, so.
Yep, understood. I'm Alex Peel with RGS Associates. With me this evening is Khalid McGall, the owner of the existing Sunoco at along Centerville Road at 520 Centerville Road. We're, the site is located within the regional commercial center district. And what's being proposed is in addition to the existing building. What's up on the screen now? I'm trying to see which one you.
I think that's the first one you asked for.
Yep. So this is just the existing conditions plan, existing conditions and demolition plan. So this includes, this is the existing site. I'm assuming everybody's familiar with the property, but just for reference, I stand over here and point.
That's fine.
So this is the entrance to the hotel here. There's an access drive that would remain to the property here going northbound on Centerville Road. There's a southern entrance, it's full movement into the property and exiting the property as well as a northern entrance and exit to the property. The gray hatch indicates what's being demolished or removed. Just to clarify, so the southern entrance will be removed and eliminated entirely, which we think is a benefit to the circulation. A number of on and off movements to Centerville Road in that area. The northern entrance will remain, that will be reconfigured, which is shown on the layout plan to be a right in, right out and a left in northbound. So it won't be full movement. We will still have full movement coming into the hotel access, which there is an easement that allows access to the property there. So this shows the southern entrance being eliminated, northern entrance being configured or reconfigured, as I noted with the right in, right out, right in and the left in northbound and the existing drive to the south remaining. What's being proposed is in addition to the existing Sunoco building. So that is shown here in the hatched area or in the crosshatch is the building, the canopy is the outer dash line there. And then.
Okay, this, this would work on this screen.
Okay.
Maybe everybody can see.
On that one? Thank you. Ah, I now have a laser. Okay. Scott was politely saying I'm too short to point. It's okay.
They had to keep zooming in and pulling it down.
So this is the reconfigured northern drive that we're talking about, the eliminated southern drive, existing Sunoco, existing canopy, that would all remain exactly the same. The addition to the building would be on the southern side. All of the parking and configuration on the northern side of the property would remain the same. What would be reconfigured is starting around the back. Right now, there is paving all across the back of the existing store. We would push that out a little bit and create a drive-through lane and follow the bypass lane here. There would be three parallel parking spaces. Those obviously would be most likely for employees for the Sunoco and the John Lees here. There'd be sidewalks that came out of the Sunoco and the Jamba and with the crosswalk to those with the order board here and the drive-through pickup window here. So circulation would come through the side here, stacking behind the building and then to the drive-through. One other modification on the southern end of the property now is the dumpster. That would be moved up to the northern side. That way trash carts would come in, service that would be nicely accessible from the rear of the building. And then it could circulate back out of the property. So the purpose of this plan, you know, smaller gas stations like the Sunoco with larger and larger chains. You know, I believe really it's kind of looking to the future and staying viable in the market. The Jamba is associated, what umbrella are they under? Focus group, which includes any amps as part of their product line. So they're work. Their group of companies that are involved. So that would be part of what served here. Certainly with the pandemic, drive-throughs have become more popular, but also you have a product like Indian, which is largely in malls. They're looking for the opportunity to get out and provide their product outside of that condition. So this kind of helps balance the business a bit with really a reduction probably in the gas service and volume by offering this new service with the drive-through. The sewer and water service of the property would remain the same as it currently exists. The design that we proposed along Centerville frontage, that is based on the proposed plans for the widening of Centerville Road. So that is consistent with that. We use the plans that were provided by the township for the design of those improvements. Which would be the sidewalk and the reconfiguration of this drive entrance into the site. There would actually be a net reduction in impervious cover as part of this project with the elimination of this drive and then quite a bit of the proposed impervious area being on top of existing impervious and the elimination of some impervious here behind the buildings. We end up with about a net reduction of 1,300 square feet. That's really kind of the extent. The addition is just under 1,500 square feet. And the way this would function is this would largely be drive-through. You could come inside and pick up at the counter, but the majority of the business is going to be drive-through. There's not an intent for this to be a sit-down restaurant environment. So although you may occasionally have somebody come in, pick up and wait or leave, that will be limited. So that will have a limited impact on the amount of parts. That's really the extent of what, what we're proposing here. As part of this submission, it did include a waiver of preliminary plan process that we're requesting to do a combined.
Alex, I have a question. This is strictly circulation. So if I go to the drive-through, pick up my product, the intent is that I'm going to leave to the south?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Unless I want gas and there's a pump for you, I guess I could swing back through again, but all exiting would be to the south.
Yes.
Okay.
If you were in the parking lot and you chose to park, you could come out and make a right.
Use that right only.
But yeah, all other exiting would come through.
Okay.
With along those same questions or along those same lines. What do you have there? Two, two islands, gas islands, gas on both sides of each one or what's the configuration?
I was just looking at that.
So if Mr. Datter had a question about exiting, is there a bypass area between there that if somebody wanted to go up to the parking area, they can get there? Or if cars are fueling, will they be blocked out?
The question is being able to recirculate back or.
Yep, exactly. And there's no parking down in that corner either, right? On the southeast corner. All the parking is up with the north property line.
That's correct.
If, so Alex, in a lot of the drive-throughs today with the backup weight, because there's not enough employees, there's additional parking. Where is the additional parking for, you know, if they get backed up for, for wait for their orders?
Well, we do have and haven't defined parking or anything in here, but there is a large, this, this paved area in here would still remain. So from the pump canopy down to the existing ride, this is all paved area in here. So if there was a backup.
I thought there's enough room where somebody's parked at this pump there, you can get by there. That's what, that's what I thought. I'm not sure.
Will they be designated that way? Is that where?
We don't have designated spaces in that area.
Yeah.
Okay. Somebody pulled into the site and immediately took a left to go to a pump.
That work because now.
Pumped their gas. What are they doing to get out then?
They're coming straight down.
I missed that connection to the south.
Yeah, that's certainly something we could take a look at because if you could strike spaces potentially in this area with the elimination of that, that drive. Like I said, this, this whole paved area from here down and down to the actual drive and all of the. I think our thought here was. Not anticipating much.
Right.
Now, business there. I think the way the, the gas agent currently functions, parking spaces are used on a limited rate. By the pump, but we can certainly take a look at that.
So would it be a pedestrian entrance into the store portion there from, from where, from the gas station or separate outdoor?
There's a, right where this thought is right here. There is a exterior entrance there that would take you into into the Jamba directly. And then there's the existing entrance into the.
So just looking at that, I'm assuming those kind of, going back to the gas pump locations, I'm assuming those kind of grayish areas are the, are the islands? Is that right?
Yeah, and here.
Yeah. And so if somebody was parked on the left side of the left island, I'll call it. No, no, the pump, left pump, they're right there. So somebody's pumping gas right there.
Right.
Is there not room to get between there and the Sunoco front?
Yeah, there is. There is a walkway that goes.
No, no, by car, by car.
This is enough space to. For one car to pass the other.
That's okay. That's what, that's what I wanted. I just didn't, I just wouldn't like it if, if you couldn't get to the upper exits and all. First pump.
Correct. Yeah.
That's what.
That's what I remember being out there. You can currently do that today. Yeah.
Yeah, but I think Mr. Palakask brings up a good point. There's any place you go to, eventually there's going to be a wait. Somebody will have to wait for a fish fryer for extra for something. And they gotta get parked. So we need to see some, I think we need to see some parking in that lower corner.
How many cars do you think will be stacked when they're at the drive-through at a peak time?
As far as the peak, I think we're in the range of probably about a half dozen or so. And that's accommodated in this lane from here all the way to the, the drive-through window.
That accommodates six cars or more or?
Six cars and then.
I don't know. I'm not sure.
Important distance between that point and outside the drive, certainly.
But it's, it's Jamba juice going right now. It's smoothies.
But there is more internal stacking that could potentially occur.
Would you have any directional signs in addition to the pavement markings?
Yes, as far as the, for the drive-through.
Yeah, for circulation, yeah.
Now, Alex, Jamba's smoothies, right? Okay, it's, we're not talking like Dunkin' Donut coffee or anything. It's, it's.
That's where their peace.
Right. It's not going to be the same as like a Dunkin' or Starbucks. It's.
It's more kind of your midday.
Yeah.
Snack, smoothie.
Yep.
Rather than concentrated dinner rush or concentrated.
Right.
So you're definitely going to have to watch your. Volume of traffic.
What are the hours of operation?
And then.
Ten, ten. Yeah, kind of.
If I have an idea, doesn't it also slope a little bit on the side? So will that cause any additional water runoff or anything?
In this area here?
Yeah, like in, am I right on that?
Yeah, it does. It slopes down this direction. So obviously we leveled out for the condition. This walkway.
They have an easement to use it. They have an easement currently.
You also have, I mean, this is all just paving running off now.
Yeah, that's why I wasn't sure.
They have an easement for access to it now.
So you're not anticipating having to do anything with stormwater?
No, not with the reduction.
They've entered into the easement agreement. That's recorded. So they can't change.
Yeah, when we are, the way the timing on this worked is they, they've submitted this request to you now for, for relief for the preliminary plan and to come in with the sketch. And we also are reviewing the, the LD plan that they submitted, the full, the full plan set. So we will be taking a close look at the stormwater and making sure everything works out. I think the way your application came in was sorted, positioned to be a, a small project or an exemption of that. But I think we're going to look at it just as this swap of asphalt as a regular stormwater management plan, because your limited disturbance is greater than the 5,000 that would be allowed for a small project. So, so we'll take a look at it that way and make sure that all that, all that balances out in the end. So just had a conversation on that this afternoon. So, so we're working through that review. Should have that ready soon.
Yeah, and just to clarify that point, I didn't realize that you had to do the sketch plan. So that, that is why if you're wondering why.
And we did have several initial discussions mostly revolving around traffic and, and access management onto, on the Centerville Road with, with a strong desire to eliminate one of those and really to eliminate that left out at that, at that one driveway because of the access easement that they have down to the.
That's going to really clean that area.
Yeah, yeah, to the driveway to the south.
Yeah.
Has, has the neighbor, neighboring adjoininger been made aware of the fact that additional traffic may come through to use their access?
For the hotel access? I don't know if there's been any discussions with that.
Your agreements, handle that and they are allowed to do, you know, you're basically, anybody that would have turned left would have probably came out of the existing access. Now every, everybody that wants to turn left is going to go through.
Yeah, that's a discussion that could be had.
There is a recorded access easement between the two properties that allow for them to, to get to that driveway to the south. There is a recorded access easement between the two properties that allow for them to, to get to that driveway to the south.
I took a look at the easement. There's nothing in there that's been negated. Yeah, so it's good to go.
Okay, any other conversation or questions regarding a plan? We, we don't take action on the sketch plan per se, but we do need to take action on the preliminary plan waiver request. So if there's no further discussion, I'll be ready for a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend granting the waiver of preliminary plan submission for Sunoco redevelopment project.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that, Marson.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Datter, seconded by Mr. Palakowski, that we recommend approval, recommend, we recommend approval of the waiver of the preliminary plan for Sunoco redevelopment project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That would be unanimous. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
All right, Cindy, I suppose you or Scott are going to prepare, present the next.
Actually.
They're all here now.
Yep.
Hey, thanks.
They are on Zoom. Jackie Hollenbach from Mac Engineering is.
Okay.
Yes, hello. I'm sitting in for Matt. He had a conflict tonight. So I guess my understanding is we just wanted to get in front of the board. As everybody's aware, this project has been ongoing conditional approval back in 2019, late 2019. We had to work through a bunch of the loss updates, as I'm sure yous all remember. They had an issue with their interceptor out there. So while they hired an outside consultant and we worked through the whole COVID thing, Keith Turkey Hill had decided to remove the car wash, which had reduced some of our EDUs as well. And we were able to go for our planning module. We did get our planning and module approval in September. Turkey Hill then decided to, well, not decided, but they had a switch of a brand partner. So that we had tweaked the plan to rotate the building 90 degrees. And actually works a little bit better with traffic flow and things, I think, through the drive-through as well, because it gives us an extra lane there where traffic can go, you know, bypass it. The, the brand partner that's interested wanted a dedicated drive-through lane that would service. You'll see, there's two drive-through lanes there. One is for the regular drive-up window where they would order. The other one is for mobile orders. So they can come, pick up and leave without having to stack that volume of traffic in the, in the drive-through lane waiting for a mobile order. We have worked through with the township engineer, I believe, all the technical comments that they had on these, these items on this plan. We did get a review letter back this week from the conservation district on the MPDS. So we'll work at those couple of comments that are left on that. This was a modification due to the plan change. And we did submit the engineer's cost opinion too, which I believe Scott and Matt had reviewed together. We also updated our plan to include JMT had recently finished their, their final design of the Centerville Road improvements that they're doing out there. So we had updated the plan to include the changes that they're making on Centerville Road as well. And we submitted back to LASSA just for their. And we submitted back to LASSA just for their, kind of their final review with the new brand partner connections there. And we'll continue to coordinate with the city of water and their pump station. But otherwise, I know everybody's anxious to get this plan moving off your table. It felt like forever waiting for, for LASSA to figure out what they were going to do with their interceptor issues. So we're happy to, to see this moving. So. I'm assuming that Matt can get that probably submitted back in the next, you know, two weeks or so back to the conservation district. And hopefully that'll be the approval we need from them.
So anything else from your staff?
Mostly just to run that by you again because it's been so long since it, it got its conditional approval. And it changed significantly since then, but generally with the same intent, still a Turkey Hill and, and one separate freestanding use. Like she did mention, the city's pump station would be right above the way the plan sits, right above that, that separate freestanding use. It does not show on this plan. They are processing a separate stormwater management plan with the township at this point, and we're working through comments with them. So that's sort of been removed from this plan. We didn't want to have outdated information on, on either plan. So we'll have two, two accurate, complete plans at the end that, that will show, show either improvement.
So it's continuation of that, was it Drive B or something like that?
Yes, yeah. And, and the city's facility would be an extremely low volume facility. It's just a pump station. So occasionally maintenance workers would have to go to it, but that's it.
Any other revisions affect the traffic impact study?
No, the, the uses that, that they're showing now are consistent with what they were before. Basically, you just were moving them around. It's like puzzle pieces. They just kept sort of shuffling and reconfiguring the, the footprint of the building and. But the access points stayed the same and.
We removed the car wash as well, so.
Yes, yeah, car wash came and, came and went.
Double drive-through lanes doesn't affect traffic impacts though, or was that always there?
That just increases, or it decreases the stacking length within the site, which was a conflict for, for traffic trying to maneuver through the site. So having the, the extra lanes is, is, is helpful for that. They can stack them or they could have a much longer lane, so. And the, the use to the rear, the small, the small brand partner use, that's something new to us. We had a couple of questions about how that worked and why there were two drive-throughs also, and I think she, she explained that this evening. That's not something I'm familiar with around here at all where there's sep- separate drive-throughs like that. Yeah.
I, I wish more would do it though. I mean, so often I've sat in a, in a, in a drive-through for a mobile order and I'm like, oh man, this is terrible. Like, you know, especially with COVID because a lot of times the insides are closed. You know, if you do a mobile order, you now have to wait through the long drive-through to, you know, to get, pick up your mobile order.
Yeah, yeah. I believe I heard the name of it. It wasn't at Chick-fil-A. That was rumor.
Yeah, no. I, I don't know the actual name, but I was going to say, I, I think it's kind of more of a sandwich type shop if I'm not mistaken.
Mentioned it in our last conversation. It was nothing I ever heard of. So it's nothing from around here at this point. Be new.
But people will know about it being that far off the street. Interesting to see how that works.
Its visibility is a little limited, but.
Yeah.
That's, that's their.
Okay.
Their option.
It's, it's, that's what, you know, it's a difficult site for somebody to get your, your, your drive-by, you know, yeah, your drive-by traffic, but they're interested in it. So well. You know, we're kind of going with their spec and what works for them to, to kind of fit in there, so.
Any idea when the next plan with submission or review will be?
We're, we're hoping that they're, they, they will be looking at a time extension to get all of this done that will take them till the end of the year. Of this year, and I think that's when they need to be done by.
That's their last extension.
Yes, there was a condition put on that one that it's the last one.
Is that the end of the year? Matt thought it was the end of January. Is it, what, do you know what that date is?
12/31.
A 12/31, okay.
Yeah, this, this will be the seventh time extension on, on resolving their condition.
Right. And in the, in the event, and I'm going to ask the question, maybe Matt would in, but in the event that, say, we, you know, are going through the DEP review. And, and while Lancaster is pretty quick at their reviews, you know, we get delayed with that. Would we just then resubmit as a new application?
Correct.
Okay. That's fine. I mean, I'm, I'm hoping that's not the case, but in the event that, you know, there's some kind of lag on their side, obviously when we're dealing with outside agencies, you know, we're at their discretion. But like I said, we just got the review letter today. Matt's going to try to turn around as quick as he can and get it back into, to D, yeah, to the conservation district for their, their review. As far as the township, I think we addressed, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we addressed the technical comments. I think the remaining comments are mostly, you know, O and M agreements and that kind of stuff.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, Jackie, thank you for the update.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Great.
So your next plan there are also on Zoom to Brent Sapon from Skellingloy for the Belco Credit Union.
Hi, I would like to introduce Brent, if I may. My name is Robert Hope. I'm the Vice President of Corporate Support with Belco. Just to fully introduce Brent and to explain who Belco is. We are a credit union that was established in 1939. We have 15 branches, including one in the Township over on Good Drive. Just shy of 70,000 members and about 245 employees. I will introduce Brent in just a moment, but I did want to point out, we have Rick and Chrissy are, are on the call as well. They're the operators and owners of that Fish Place, which is the neighboring property and also the current owners of the site. So we're excited, we're very excited to present our plan and we thank you to, for listening to it. So with that, I'd like to ask Brent to go ahead and present our plan.
Good evening. What we have here currently, if you can zoom out a little bit first. Cindy, it's a 3.1 acre tract that is the long side of it, along South Tree Drive. The property is on the north side of South Tree Drive, between South Tree Drive and that Fish Place building is just to the north of this lot. The short side being along Centerville Road on the west side there. What we're looking to do is subdivide this property into two lots. 1.3 acre lot on the west side, as you see here with the proposed Belco facility, which leaves about a 1.8 acre lot on the east side. Currently, the entire lot is vacant with basically the exception, on the far right side there, you'll see an existing stormwater basin. That's basically the only thing on this lot. It's basically a grass lot. Belco is looking to develop this west side, putting in a approximately 3,200 square foot building. Parking on the west between the building and Centerville Road, as you see there, there's 31 spaces shown there. And then drive-through facilities on the right side or east side of the building. And then to the north of the building are parking spaces for overflow parking for that Fish Place. If you're familiar with it, they, they fill their parking lot. So they looked, worked out a, an access or agreement to provide some additional overflow parking on the north side of Belco there for that Fish Place, which then in turn we're connecting, as you see, two driveways to connect to that Fish Place parking lot in the front of their building. The stormwater basin, as I mentioned, on the far right will be enlarged. I think if you can go to C7, Cindy now, please. That you'll see the enlarged basin over there. To handle the stormwater from the west side here, the Belco building, parking lot, everything that you saw that was hatched in the last drawing will then can be conveyed via pipes across the north side of that Lot 3B, the vacant lot over to the stormwater basin that's enlarged on the right side. Access, I should have mentioned, is from South Tree Drive there directly across from the hotel entrance that's across the street. There will be, as you're aware, Centerville Road is being widened and sidewalks placed along it. We're proposing sidewalks along the front of the Belco facility, which is called on the plan Lot 3A. And one of the deferrals in front of you is for Lot 3B for sidewalk in front of it. Nothing is planned at this time for Lot 3B. Centerville Acres or that Fish Place will maintain ownership of that piece and has no plans at this time for any development or on that vacant piece. As you see, the property line subdividing, make creating the two lots is there just east of the drive-throughs and west of that driveline. So this Lot 3B will also have that separate bypass driveline around so vehicles can get, if they have to, from that Fish Place in and vice versa. Truck traffic to that Fish Place is on the north side of their property, so no trucks will be coming through here. We submitted a plan to, I think it was Emergency Management Coordinator Cindy, or Diane, I'm sorry. And received the letter back from her approving the fire truck access around the site that works. So we're good there. We have some minor comments we just received the other day from your township engineer. We're addressing those currently. My opinion, they're all minor ones, add some details, things like that. And we're, we're resubmitted back to the conservation district. So we received some comments from them the first time we resubmitted back, so we're waiting from them as well. I think that's pretty much it. I'll open it up if you have any questions. For me, Robert, or Rick and Chrissy.
Just a, a question, a, a timing question on this with the construction of Centerville Road, hopefully not too far future here. How will all this work with this construction? Will you have to do things twice or how's it going to be worked out?
Well, there's no construct, I don't know, not exactly sure what you mean, but the construction of Centerville Road, there's actually going to be land between, you can barely see there. But the sidewalk for Centerville Road is there, oh, about where that water main is running up the side of Centerville Road. So there's no construction. So they're really two separate projects. The only, the only potential hurdle will be the connection of the two sidewalks. When do they build their sidewalk out along Centerville Road and stop, as you see down there in the bottom, as it comes around the radius? And Belco builds their sidewalk to connect the two sidewalks. That's the only connection between the two construction projects I see there too. They're stopping before South Tree Drive, before you even get back here, and we're not going out to Centerville Road.
And the overflow parking for that Fish Place, Pet Place, that would happen at the same time as your Belco construction? Because I, isn't that really replacing some of the parking that's out close to Centerville Road?
Well, the part, the, the first part of your question, this, everything as you see here that's proposed will all be built at the same time.
Okay.
So that, that, the parking, the building and the, that Fish Place parking will all be built at the same time, excuse me, the same time. The stormwater is there to handle all of that, so it's all going to be built together. I'm not aware of removal of parking. I was not familiar with that. I think it was the second part of your question.
Yeah, maybe, maybe I mis- misunderstood or, or, or don't remember correctly. I thought part of the, the issue with the Centerville right-of-way was that some of the Fish Place parking that, that backs to the street or onto Centerville would, would, would be lost. Is that not true? Obviously, the owners would probably know that.
There was, so there was a, there was a considerable amount of additional right-of-way that went into that Fish Place and into this property. As part of the Centerville Road project that's being given, turned back to the property owners. So the, the parking lot force, that Fish Place will not need to.
Oh, okay.
To change because of.
But originally it was, right?
It was, like, the right-of-way almost went up to the face of the building. Yeah, it was that wide. It was considered, it was very considerable. So, so that's being corrected, we'd say with, with this.
Okay.
Centerville Road project.
And we're, we're very thankful for that, by the way, so.
You can kind of see the property line there going up across that Fish Place. It's on the right side of that middle parking aisles there. There's a line with a PL on it heading up. That's the current right-of-way, and it actually went all the way down through this property as well.
So it's.
So that's been.
That'd be wide enough.
Yeah, it looks like the only parking lots, the parking spaces that are being removed are on the end. Seven spaces, looks like on your existing conditions plan.
Yes, down along the bottom of that will be removed to connect the two driveways there.
Okay.
All right, thanks for clarifying that. I think we should at least read through the, the modifications. I don't have copies in front of me, so.
Sure, they're, they're a little, maybe a little confusing and I can explain anything, any questions?
No, a couple were deferrals just on sidewalks.
Sure.
Curbing or whatever. So you, Scott, do you want to?
Sure, I can, I can go through these. The first one talks about sidewalk and how that needs to be proposed on existing adjacent roadways. What we're recommending is that the applicant pay a fee in lieu of, for the sidewalk that would be required along Centerville Road. That fee would go towards the work that's being done with the Centerville Road project. There already was a sidewalk or walkway programmed in as part of the Centerville Road project. So it, it, it would have been a very complicated overlap. So our recommendation is they pay a fee that, that fee can go towards helping to pay for that improvement that's part of the township and state project. They will be putting, they will be putting the sidewalk in along this section right here on South Tree Drive on their frontage. But this section on the rear lot is being deferred at this point until a development plan comes in for this lot. That's, that's pretty typical and this could actually get damaged or, or have to come out depending on what the, the proposal is for that lot at that point. So it's deferred, plus if a, a new LD plan comes in for that back lot, it would be required anyway. So it's, it's well protected that that sidewalk could be built at that time. So that, that speaks to number one. Number two. Number two is a very similar requirement. There's different sections within the ordinance that speak to kind of the same thing. But this is looking at the, again, the deferral of the, of the sidewalk along, along 3B. What we did say with this section, the township has had a history of collecting a fee in lieu of for the required widening or improvements, improvements to center line of the, of the roadway. So we asked the applicant, as a condition of getting the relief of this section, that they provide a cost opinion of what it would cost to mill re-overlay the roadway from the curb line to the center line along Centerville Road and South Tree Drive frontage for the properties. And then we'll memorialize that in our, in our letter that, that looks at the, the overall cost opinion and the other fees that are due with the project. The third item talks about environmental impact studies. The applicant did provide, what for this type of project are the necessary studies? This is a vacant lot, but with development all around it. There, there aren't the same types of concerns about sort of a, an undeveloped lot that you might see in a rural area with this one. So we felt that they did provide enough of, of those requests. The number four request deals with the loading ratios for the stormwater. This is a fairly common one that you've seen in the past. There are limits of three to one and five to one of how much, how much water you can put on to that detention basin in the back and try and put it into the ground. So the equivalent, like one to one would be the same size as the basin could go to it. Three to one is three times the area, the square footage of the basin, being able to go to it. Those, those limitations are in place because of the type of soil that we have in the center part of Lancaster County, this karst soil. And there is a propensity for sinkholes. Doesn't mean it's going to happen. It can happen here. So those are some very basic criteria. What we do is we typically look to their professional, their geologists that did the work on the project. And if they are able to recommend that a slightly higher rate is still acceptable based on their evaluation of the site, we typically go along with that recommendation. And that's what they're looking at right here. Comment number five talks about perpendicular island, islands should be placed opposite each other in adjacent rows. Comment number five talks about perpendicular island islands should be placed opposite each other in adjacent rows of parking. They ended up because of the way the parking lots worked out that at a couple of locations, they were maybe staggered. So it's not a real, it's not a real concern that they aren't right across from from each other. So that's that's one that we've recommended relief of in the in the past. Item number six deals with the maximum depth of flow across a driveway. You're allowed one and a half inches with a twenty-five-year storm event. The applicant is seeking to modify this to allow one-point-eight, so very minor difference in that in meeting that criteria.
What intersection was that?
This is their driveway with South Street Drive.
Okay.
So it's not a public street to a public street. It's simply the public street with their driveway. And again, we're talking about.
Yeah.
Like that much. The 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 ramifications of trying to comply would be they'd likely have to go out into South Street Drive, find a section of storm sewer. If it's, I don't even remember for sure if it's there, and then try and put a new inlet in in order to catch just enough water to get it down that fraction of an inch. So we felt that this was de minimis, as a lawyer might say, as far as as far as that relief request went. So so we were comfortable in in granting that, recommending granting of that request, too. And the last item we we typically put on our letters to make sure that all this is memorialized in the cover sheet of the plan so that anybody looking at it in the future will be able to know what the final decision was on all these sections of relief.
Okay, do any of the Planning Commission members have questions on any of those modifications? Any further discussion required? Okay. We can take a motion on those six modification requests.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend granting the deferrals of waivers one and two and grant conditional approval of plan waivers number three, number four, number five, and number six per staff and engineer review comments and recommendations.
A second. John. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Deeter, seconded by Mr. Spangler, that we recommend granting the deferrals in plan waivers numbers one and two and grant conditional approval for waivers three through six per staff and engineers' comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, that would be unanimous. And then if there's no further questions about any engineers' comments or reviews on the plan itself, we need take a vote on the final land development plan for Belco Credit Union.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to recommend approval of the final land development plan for Belco Credit Union conditioned on the applicant addressing all staff and engineering comments within ninety days at the Board of Supervisors' approval.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Deeter, seconded by Mr. Palakowski, that we recommend approval of the final land development plan for Belco Credit Union subject to staff and engineers' comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that would be unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Joining us.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, looks like there's no no new business unless you've changed your mind since.
No.
Okay. Any project report?
I'm still trying to figure out what exactly you want to see in a in a report, because I haven't been able to find Mr. Beck's. But what I did provide to you was what I had given to the Board of Supervisors at their meetings, and it just briefly explains what projects are currently outstanding. The kind of general information that first couple pages, but what I guess would be called the planning report. We're moving through the special exception and conditional use ordinance process. You see the timeframes there. The signed ordinance is being amended, and that's going through the planning group now. The planning group met yesterday. They're going to be meeting next week as well to complete their agenda. Eagles Mirror is a conditional use hearing that we're moving through, and that's gonna be heard by the Board of Supervisors for the second time next week. Then we have a couple of stormwater management and Saldau projects. Nothing that really has been submitted at this point. They're just kind of talks at this point. Woodcrest Village is talking about maybe expanding their footprint a bit at the corner of Harrisburg and McGovern. Doing something in there. Of course, you heard Belco tonight, their traffic impact study did come back from the Traffic Engineer. The Salford Project still is kind of pending out there, working through the Saldau process. That is the one on Marietta with the fifty-five single-family homes. City of Lancaster, as you heard tonight, is working through their stormwater project on that old tree and Centerville Road behind the Turkey Hill. And then the last one is Mavis Tire, also working through the process. You're probably going to see that at your December meeting of the Planning Commission.
Where is that?
Mavis is the former Friendly's on Columbia.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
So they're tearing that down and reusing it. And that's pretty much all that's going on.
Does that mean that voting district is gonna be renamed to Mavis? It's the Friendly, it was the Friendly Voting District, I think.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I just heard that mentioned the other day.
Really?
Yeah. So whatever, just a little bit of trivia. By the way, Cindy, I, we talked recently about Homestead Village. And I went, I went through that area. I have a garden that I rent from the the church there. So I was heading back through there today, and there were surveyors all over the place.
We did find the plan, so we do have a copy of the sketch.
Five-story.
Yes.
Saw. They're talking about adding a five-story column in there. Should be interesting to see how they.
Yeah, so nothing was submitted on that one, but yes, they're they're in talks with Scott as well, so.
In the manager's report, I think you attached to our our email. That also talked about the Centerville Road. Is it?
Centerville Road is.
Take out that, the part of it's next year and the other half's the following year.
It's gonna be a three-year project.
Three years. Is the bridge come first or last?
Sorry?
Does the bridge come first or last?
A two-year project.
Yeah.
They're starting eastbound, northbound. East side of Centerville. Spring of twenty-three, it's will be the fall of twenty-three. That's gonna be the west or southbound side of Centerville. They didn't really mention the bridge.
I mean, that's kind of like the whole reason nothing's been done in thirty years is because of that bridge, so.
Right.
I would hope it's on the front end and not the back end.
Yeah, they didn't really mention the bridge, but according to everyone that's talking, we cleared all the right-of-way. So the right-of-way is clear. The utilities are pretty much coordinated. So it looks like they're gonna let make the let date of January this year.
Everything's okay with the railroad, too.
Once I sign the agreement that says we owe them seven hundred thousand dollars.
What? We owe them?
Well, it's gonna be reimbursed back to PennDOT eighty percent, so we'll be having to pay twenty percent of that. It's an eighty-twenty project, but yeah, seven hundred thousand just to engineer it. It's not.
The rail, the railroad across. Oh, gosh. Good to be, good to be.
And that that isn't even Amtrak. That's Norfolk Southern.
Yeah, I'm sure the one was a lot more.
Yeah.
Two eighty-three.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So there'll be a lot of construction projects going on. We've got Centerville, we've got Church Street paving, and then we hopefully will have the Old Wars Town Road, which is off of Dairy. Or Dairy's off of Wars Town.
Anybody else see any projects around that they'd like to ask about more? Now, your team. Okay, Cindy, it doesn't look like there's anybody on.
There is not.
Zoom, so we don't have any public comments. So if there's no further business to come before the commission, this meeting is adjourned. How long have you had?
Had it.
The Brooks County area?
Three years.
Pretty well.
My mom.
Someone.
Get off the Schilling connection or is it further?
It's several years old.
I've never used that.
Yeah, it took a little. This is the first one I had. I'm not like. It's it's kind of in the little, but I like it.
Yeah, it's kind of heavy.
Yeah.
But I could put a lot of stuff in as far as.
Yeah.
Other software and stuff.
Left-hand side or right-hand side?
For DVD drive.
Yeah.
This is a USB, though, right? That's a USB.
Yeah, I don't have a CD thing.
Well, you can, you could, you could, you could have a plugin. You can have a plugin.
Before you get to the hospital.
This one's a Lenovo. Think fast.
Microphone.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah. Do you have like the suite on there or are you doing everything on the cloud?
No, I have, I have it built in, like, it's installed.
Because I got a McDonald's. My machine would have.
Like right on a.
Twenty nineteen.
Right on a.
Maybe I'm wrong.
So I have the office suite. Yeah, I'm so used to.
I gotta be up there Friday night.
I mean, I do, I mean, I also use like some of the Google software, too, like in the cloud, but.
Staffing it.
On a Friday night, I will be, usually I like to be there about an hour before games, like five.
I'll get to go home. So the cloud base, you pay a.
Yeah.
See you, guys.
But it's just what I love here, so.
Yeah. So you're, you're gonna be.
I mean, to go that way, it shouldn't be too bad. But I.
Yeah.
I guess so. It was.
You don't think on Friday.
Some of the shortcuts are different, but.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay. All right. Think about it. My wife keeps saying.
I don't travel during rush hours.
The keyboard laptop from two thousand and eleven or twelve.
Right, yeah.
I got a lot of stuff on there, but I'm pretty sure I won't be able to put on a new computer. Somebody's.
Oh, yeah, and they're just gathering dust.
Well, my, I'm kind, I'm the same way, almost.